The August 29th special meeting, which is called for the purpose of conducting interviews of the finalist candidates for Detroit City Manager position. For the public who might now just be joining us for this televised meeting, we completed the first four interviews of the finalists Jim Creach, Vincent Pastue, John Gabor, and Brian Kishnick. The next candidate to be interviewed is Mark Miller. The interview is expected to take about two hours. City Council members have prepared approximately thirty questions in advance of the meeting, so the candidates should be prepared to answer each question in an average of about four minutes. City Council members will take rotating turns in asking the questions. Members of the public will not be provided with a formal opportunity to ask the candidates' questions, but City Council encourages the public to communicate their observations to the council members through email prior to the deliberations, which will take place this afternoon at three o'clock. There is also a public comment portion of the meeting, which is scheduled as the last item of business under the City Council Rules of Procedure. Councilman Teetz will begin with the questions.
Mark, if you could just give us a three-minute synopsis or less of your professional background and just some accomplishments.
Yes, I was trained as an urban planner and worked as a planning consultant for the few first few years of my career. And during that time, I decided I had a professional goal of becoming a planning director. Got married, my wife had a job in Cleveland Clinic, we moved down there for a few years. I personally couldn't find a really good job. We had a baby, and we ran back to Detroit, and I got a job at the Charter Township of Clinton as a planner one. And within three months, I was appointed to the Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development. And then through that time, I was in charge of, I was second-in-command of the planning department, but also I was in charge of the Board of Zoning Appeals and grants. And I actually managed about, I think it was about twenty-seven million dollars' worth of grants for a variety of things from community development, block grant, police, fire, parks. And then was trying to find a way to become a planning director, and a principal planner position came available at Troy. And the theory was, as Mr. Keesling was getting ready to retire, there was no guarantee that I was going to become planning director, but that did happen. And then while here, becoming a planning director, I believe I put forth and carried through on a number of planning-related initiatives and development approvals, efficiencies, but also had a personal and professional desire to learn more about management. And I believe that I investigated corporate management philosophies and theories, and there are some people out there who also translate them to local government. And as part of that, I believe that was recognized by both Brian Murphy, an Assistant City Manager here, and John Zerlai, the City Manager. And eventually, I had a few accomplishments and ended up moving into the City Manager's office and was an Assistant, Acting Assistant City Manager for a while, but in the downsizing, became the Director of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Second question. Tell us what you've done in your past jobs to ensure that council members are informed with both the pros and cons of a project, so that they have information needed to facilitate doing their jobs?
I think what is most important is, and it depends on the scope and scale of the issue, is whether you bring together certain team members internally, but then you actually go through and develop all the potential scenarios, the pros and cons. And many times, you need to have a few different department heads, the leaders of the organization, to get together and do that and vet it, because obviously, one person can't think of everything. And then there's a synergy when you get the department heads and the leaders of the organization together.
Mr. Miller, in what ways might government learn from free-market successes? Describe any methodologies adopted from the private sector that you've applied in the public sector? What worked and what didn't work?
Well, I have one specific example, which I think, and I identify myself as one of my professional accomplishments. And I actually, I won an award at Clinton Township, and I think technically, the award went to the township. I don't know if you're aware of Clinton Township. They have an area on Quinn Road, which is fourteen-and-a-half mile near Grashit, which was a minority area, and there is a lot of subsidized housing. Also, there was another area, which is north of Mount, touching Mount Clemens. And these areas were part of Urban Renewal Program. And if you haven't been in government a long time, really quickly, what Urban Renewal did was buy up neighborhoods which were substandard. Well, in Clinton Township, they had these large areas, which were traditionally minority areas, but they were empty and vacant, and then they used community development block grant dollars to install roads and streets. So when I started working there, there was all these empty lots. And then combined with that, there was a lot of subsidized housing. So there were health code problems, there were police problems with, I believe CRAC was really big at that time. And so I developed personally a process in which we marketed these developable properties, because they had, they were vacant lots, they were, they had water, sewer, and roads. And I developed a methodology where we, the price of the properties were set at a hundred dollars a linear foot, I believe, or fifty dollars a linear foot. But what I did is, I developed a process in which if we could sell this to someone, and they build a house in eighteen months, they would then, we would waive the remaining payment. So they would end up getting a buildable lot for fifteen hundred dollars. And so it was a long-term process, and in the end, we ended up having two hundred homes be built in these traditionally minority areas and low-income areas. And how it relates to the free market is that if we, it was like an incentive in which it helped reduce the cost, but then what happened is, is that you had homes being built in where there were homes not being built. And so it, basically, we used the free market to get things to happen by reducing the cost of a buildable lot. And then there was a lot more that we went into it in three minutes, I can't talk about, because it was like six different phases, including to one large vacant piece that was end up being developed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you provide an example of a time when you believed council was wrong or misguided on an important issue? Tell us what the issue was, what did you do in that case, and what was the end result?
I have one question. And I'm in a unique situation. Are you saying any council?
Any council.
Okay. All right.
That doesn't...
Or legislative.
Lay it out, this is your chance.
Well, I think one of the most, well, are you saying collectively as a council or individuals? I'm sorry for asking so many questions. A decision that was rendered?
I think it would be wrong, lengths of a decision that was rendered.
Collectively.
Collectively.
Okay. And I think that, I'm going to pick an example that unfortunately is this community, and is somewhat contentious right now. And that has to do with Boyd Street and West Oak subdivision. If you go in that area, the connection to Range Tree is physically connected, the connection to Boyd Street to the West Oak subdivision is physically connected. But what City Council did at, I believe was probably 1:00 AM, they redesigned the plan and put barriers up, when really, what should have happened, council should have, in my opinion, postponed it and had the professional staff and the developer redesign the layout to achieve what council wanted. And it's, when I say it's funny, in life and career, you sometimes have to get, you know, get a little chuckle of things. So the next morning, Mr. Keesling was still working here, the Long-Term Planning Director, and I was here, and the developer came in, and we all looked at the resolution, and all three of us came up with a different interpretation of what that resolution was. So we didn't really know how to apply it. But the moral of the story is that sometimes designing things at the table at 1:00 AM is not the best way to go.
I would go on to that. Could you provide, good morning, Mark, anyways.
Thank you.
Could you provide examples of actions you have taken in the past to build a cohesive team and gain respect of department heads and direct reports? And could you tell us what worked for you, what didn't work for you, and if there, why or why not?
Are you looking more directly at department heads and staff?
Well, I think I'm looking at it from maybe your perspective. I know some of these questions are geared toward somebody that had city manager experience, but if you could relate it to being an Assistant City Manager, maybe from that perspective.
Yeah. To be honest, I spent a lot of my career working in a planning department and being relatively small, not managing a large, you know, less than ten people. And when I was appointed by John Zerlai as Acting Assistant City Manager, for a year at least, there was also Public Works under me. So it was a whole new realm for me, where I had to start managing and be responsible for larger groups of people. And I think the most important thing that I did was, one, is try to listen, have trust in those department heads. And when I say give them authority, they're the experts in the arenas in which they work in. And allow them to make decisions, and if they do make mistakes, that's all right, because I would like, I like to encourage creativity in solving problems. And as long as the mistakes aren't drastic or horrible, but little mistakes. So what it is, is building a trust with them and allowing them to be their experts and respect them.
True.
And one last thing is, at times, bringing in different department heads from different fields, like we have library director now, she sits in, and sometimes she can comment and provide input to an engineering-related matter. And that goes back to the synergy of a management style that I kind of believe in, which is more participatory, where you bring people in to help solve the problems.
Mark?
Process improvement and continuous improvement generally require a long-term commitment in order to institutionalize the change within the organization. Tell us how you have sustained a long-term emphasis on improvements so that they become lasting improvements.
I think part of that question really identified something that's really important. I just want to make a point, is that after working for municipalities for many years, change and improvement takes time, for good, in many different arenas. But to get to the point of the question, I believe first, that as part of my professional research, I found that there were people out there who wrote about how municipalities can become more efficient and improve. And at that time, Brian Murphy was charged to review our development approval processes from start to finish. And I directed that, and a firm called Zucker Systems came forward. And the key is, first of all, is to bar, you know, reveal your good points and your bad points. If you're not willing to show or have someone identify what you're not doing good, you're never going to be able to improve. So I believe by bringing in the Zucker Systems, along with then systematically, over years, getting the master plan approved, Big Beaver Corridor studied, and then Zucker System, and then implementing those one-hundred-and-one recommendations that are in that, and committing to become fast, fair, and predictable in development approval, is my example. I think we've done a pretty good job, we're trying to, what I think now is the difficult part, because I'm a big believer in performance measurement and benchmarking, but how do you do that? And what I mean by that, really quick, as an example, that I researched and investigated, take, you know, and here, I'm going to take a planning department. How do you benchmark planning document approvals? I mean, you don't measure them like how much sidewalks you've installed. So that becomes a problem in municipal government, if you're going to do continuous approvals. How do you measure certain things? How do you, I mean, is, if you take a library, is just measuring the number of people who check out stuff, is that a really good measurement? So it's a, performance measurement is a little tricky in municipal government.
Okay. Mark, I've got a question about, when you talk about improvement, you talk about continuous improvement. Once you have made a change based on some recommendation or something, some direction you want to go, you've done some reviewing. What about, at this review point, is there a process that you apply that has to do with maybe tinkering with it to alter that, change its vector, because you've decided it's not really going the direction it's supposed to, or has it fallen back? Is there something you'd like to do with that?
I think you bring up a valid point. It's, if you really are believing in continuous improvement, it never ends. You have to continually look at it. And we have identified some things that we're trying to do, such as did have people submit applications which are digitized. Well, that creates a whole other set of problems and issues. Do you have enough technology? It costs more. So, and what you're saying is that you have to, you know, you say you're going to do it, but then when you start getting into doing it, you have to then take, step back and look at how you really can do it, because you create a whole other set of problems and issues.
Mark, can you give us some examples of types of negotiations that you've done, and whether you were a direct participant with the negotiations or a third-party facilitator? What were some of the issues? What steps to the processes did you follow to reach an agreement, and which party won, if any, and why? Fourteenth-part question.
Most of my negotiation experience has been in the, more in the realm of development approval. And I would not say that you have winners and losers in development approval negotiations. You want to both win. So I have been part of many negotiations with developers, starting with PUD One, just north of Woodside Bible Church, to the Monarch. And there's an interesting story with the Monarch, because when the developer came in and said they wanted to build this intensive, high-end residential facility, people laughed. And at that time, Doug Smith was my boss, and I brought it to Doug, and Doug said, "Well, that's just, you know, ridiculous." I said, "Oh, hold on, Doug." And Doug was a really good boss, because he would listen. You know, he didn't just say no automatically. I said, "Sometimes you have to listen to what they have to say." Just, and so we came in there, and we listened, and they actually had thought out what they were going to do, but obviously, 2008 changed everything. So, and I kind of know what you're getting at, and I readily state that I think that I have not done labor negotiations very much. I've had a little experience working with ASME, when I was involved with Public Works, while Public Works were under me before they, we reorganized, a second time, and put it under the City Manager.
The question is, managers often have very vexing problems that defy the traditional problem-solving methods. Tell us about a time where you employed some creative talents to solve an administrative problem, and if you can give a specific example. And what did you do?
An administrative problem?
I think a problem in general, but administrative would be useful to solve, or to answer a question.
Okay. There are times when situations come up where you hear one side of the story, and sometimes it can make someone, or a city employee, or it could even be two different employees, look negative, for, you know, whatever degree, it doesn't matter. What I think is very important is that, one, is that you don't jump to conclusions, and that you listen to both sides of the story, and if you can't ascertain, then you need to creatively try to get to the bottom of what that problem is, and find out what the truth is.
And what kind of creativity would you suggest? Light detector type?
I'm kidding, I'm not kidding. Well, I mean, initially, obviously, you meet with people, and depending on the situation, you can bring both parties in, which sometimes really cuts down, helps you get to the truth better, if you can civilly bring the parties together. I've seen that work before really well. I've even seen it work with residents who are complaining, you know, bring them both in, and one, one is saying that someone's doing something, and then when you bring them together, the truth tends to come out, because it's a lot easier to tilt it one way when the other party's not there.
Got you.
From time to time, actions occur which damage the public's confidence in city government. Give us an example of how this may have happened, and tell us how you handle it, or you wouldn't handle it.
A lot of times, I see what's happening is that something happens, and then people in the community, and I'll just try and say people in the community, interpret it a certain way. And I think what is difficult, and what you have to do, and I have done, is bring what the facts are forward and sort of mediate that. And there's a variety of ways in which you potentially could do that, whether it's the press, individual meetings, or city council reports or updates. But what is, what I have found in my career, the difficulty is that we work in all this day-to-day, we kind of know what's happening, the truth, we can't understand how people outside are actually perceiving it. And sometimes, what we see is so simple, they, other people don't really see that. So what we have to do is learn how to create information and deliver that information. And there's a whole variety of ways. I mean, social media might be one way, website, and other things I mentioned, reports are worth the press. And sometimes, it even could require individual meetings with residents or groups, or, and there's a variety of other types of meetings which are effective, whether those be, I don't really use the word town hall meetings personally, but just, you know, if there's an issue, you could then have a meeting to help address that. And I'm going a little long, but I think what it comes down to, though, is informing people, providing them the information. But the difficult part is making sure that that information can be understandable. Sometimes, we, in local government, we use our own speak, our own talk, and we have to learn how to translate that, so people can clearly understand what's happening.
Thank you. Could you please provide an example of a complex financial project for which you were responsible? What made it complex? What was your specific role in the process? And what was the most difficult part for you?
Well, this project was part of a much larger scale. It was when I was moved into the City Manager's office as the Acting City Manager for Economic Development Services. And we were generally restructuring, so there was a lot of things going on, but what I'm going to try to hone in on is narrow it down a little bit. The City Manager gave us the directive that we had to reduce costs forty percent in planning, building, and engineering. Now, each of those were very different. Engineering works on a lot of capital projects, they already had three consultants. Building Department, at the same time, was being subsidized through the general fund substantially. And then the planning department, they just had a lot less work, and things were just falling off. So what we had to do is then look at each department and how we potentially could cut costs. And then we put out to bid to see if the private sector could provide those services at a lower cost. And each of those departments ended up having a different outcome in a way of providing those services. Now, let me give you an example. We went to the, to the engineering department, and the engineer, okay, the engineering department had this challenge, which I've worked with Steve Endet, because in this position, in the City Manager's office, you don't do everything, you have to rely on your professionals in those departments to do that. We had to look at that, which included cutting the staff in half, and then bidding out, and looking at with the private sector, how they would provide those services at what cost. And we were able to do an analysis and show, and we ended up showing City Council, that at certain levels of capital projects, having the staff cut in half and utilizing the three consultants was actually the most cost-effective. Now, the planning department was a little different. Let me backtrack, just slightly. We talked about the Zucker Report a little bit. Part of what we did is restructure, and we moved for, moved from the building department, the zoning interpretation, Board of Zoning Appeals, and code enforcement to the planning department. And there was a few reasons why we did that. One was to isolate the true building costs, providing building services. But also, it had to do with providing better services, having the planning director or planner interpret the zoning ordinance. So when we did that, we then also cut the staff in the planning department, but we all then had what was called use escrow fees, where we have the developers pay for the consultant's actual fee to review the development plan, so we can directly attribute the cost of review to the developer. And then in that department, we also put out to bid code enforcement, and we found it was less expensive to utilize our existing staff. And then the most interesting one was the building department. We put out to bid for building services only, but that would retain a director and a staff person. We had two firms that submitted bids. The Safebuilt submitted a secondary unrequested bid, so that they could actually save us more money if they did the whole thing. And it was sort of a very complex, drawn-out process, and there were some difficulties in it related to personnel, and I won't go too much into right now. But management's original desire was to continue with staff leading the consultant, but the staff indicated to us that they did not want to do that, so then we went down the road to privatize almost the whole department. That has become very cost-effective, and I believe we're providing much better services than we ever were, and are, you know, providing technological advances as part of that, too.
Can you tell us some of the methods that you would use in strategic planning for our organization?
Well, there are a variety of ways, and there are a variety of interpretations of what strategic planning is. And also, there are different scopes and scales of problems which you need to address, and each one is different. What is important is that you identify your missions and goals and objectives as part of that process. That, some people think that that's fluff, but that helps direct everyone to where you're going, and that also requires a lot of work with whoever is in charge of that agency, to develop, especially the overall mission. But you have to then get input from the stakeholders, and every situation's different, who those stakeholders are. But what's key, though, is part of that process, when you're doing your mission and goals, because you don't really achieve mission and goals, they're lofting out there. You need to then develop with the stakeholders what objectives... You need to then develop with the stakeholders what objectives which are measurable to get to that point. And the key is part of that process is, one, to, to get the input from the stakeholders, whoever that might be in that situation, and develop those objectives which you can measure so you know that you're achieving towards your, your goals, which ultimately show that you're going towards your mission. And there are a lot of different techniques. You can use survey techniques, you can utilize workshops to, to extract this information. But what I think is key is that the top leaders of whatever group you're dealing with, because you can use these methods in different scopes and scales, develop what that mission and what the goals are. And then there becomes an important time that who those direct leaders are, do get input from the people who are, you know, right below whoever the leaders are in that circumstance.
Thanks. Mark, please describe actions you've taken in the past to establish sound relationship with council, city staff, the community, and could you provide an example of each one of those groups if you could?
Staff, community, and council. Well, I think first with staff, it's very important to develop a trust, clear expectations, especially if someone who you happen to be managing. And then a trust in the relationship with your equal counterparts. With the community, I think what is very important when working with the community, it's sort of a customer service basis. In other words, one, that you answer their phone calls, you've talked to them, you treat them with respect, and you try to resolve their problems. Now, your city council members, we know that can't happen every single time, but what's important is that you treat them what, with, you know, customer service philosophy. Now, with council, I think one of the most difficult things in, in the relationship between management or staff with council is that they meet at council meetings and we see each other in our, in our roles. And I think what's important is that, that both the staff and council, you know, take a little bit of time and at least get to know each other a little bit above and beyond that role up on the dais on Monday nights. Because each one of us aren't really exactly as we are up there every day in life. And I think it's important to get to know a little bit about people, who they are and where they're coming from. Because it's what, you know, it's just, you find that people are different and you gain more of a respect for them when you kind of get to know them as opposed to just seeing each other on Monday nights.
Thanks, Mark. Mark, what do you believe are the key measures of financial health of the city? And how do you monitor these factors? And how do you communicate them to the city council? Key measures of financial health?
Well, key measures, I believe, given today's world, we have to look at our revenues and what's happening with those revenues. You know, and, and as part of that, we also have to look at alternative ones which would explore and report that. And as part of that, you have to forecast what those revenues are going to be. Now, on the other side, it's expenditures. You know, how are you expending money? And I know that there's one particular project which, which I have been working on is, is a capital investment plan. Our community really has not ever developed a systematic means of, of looking and prioritizing capital projects. And we don't, as a, and because of that, there is no way to show the public, you know, here we have a document, these are our capital needs, and we go out five, six years, this is how, while we're planning to do it, and this is how the priorities are. Because the cap, if we look at revenues, the capital revenues are going down every year too. And that's key. Now, I think we all know that bond ratings are important too, and the city has maintained a very high bond rating and, and I believe that it's very important to continue that.
Mark, do you feel that there are other economic indicators that have some relationship with the city?
Yeah, I think there's quite a few of them. Obviously taxable value, the value, and, and it's just not, the taxable value implies, you know, what we're going to apply towards militaries, but what I mean is actually the value of land, the value of buildings. Our base, office base, and even industrial base is, is, is a little weak, unfortunately. And that will, in, in, it's a, in, because of that, that's a clear indicator of health of our community. Because economically, we, gen, the economy has to do better so those buildings will fill up. And then the va, you know, if you see then the values will go up and that actually means more revenue. There, you know, and there are other things which, which you can help measure that, you know, you know, unemployment, whether people are coming back here to take jobs.
Mark, what experience have you had with any revitalization efforts and including trying to get some financing, various methods of getting financing?
Well, as I stated earlier, I was a grants coordinator. And, and I managed over $25 million worth of grants at the Charter Township of Clinton. And I got dollars for a wide variety of projects from parks, buying park land, building community centers, baseball fields, building sidewalks, roads, home, you know, home repair programs, bringing homes up to what are called housing quality standards. But in my mind, what is more important when you talk about redevelopment, if we tie, Troy needs to redevelop. And I think that I was involved with a project which demonstrated complexity, which by no means am I stating that I'm the only professional that worked in it, because Ms. Bloom worked in it, Mr. Murphy worked on it, and that, and that was setting up the, the incentives and the development approvals for the pavilions of Troy. Besides being a complex planned unit development, it also had groundfield redevelopment authority created to pay for eligible expenditures of the demolition of the structure and also the downtown development authority provided financing too. And, you know, there was also coordination with the MEDC on that. And, and I'm going to add limb a little bit, but I think in today's world, those types of financing mechanism, mechanisms are drying up, are drying up. It's a, it's a somewhat more of a changed world. The MEDC is putting money towards businesses who, who claim that they're going to, you know, you know, they're playing us against another area, region, or another state. But I don't, right now, there is not a lot of dollars to do that. And I think it's, that's why we've sort of created, tried to create here a fast, fair, predictable, and, you know, development approval, so that people can move in quickly and have, and not spend a lot of time and money on, on trying to get the project approved and start it up.
Okay, Mark, what is the most unpopular decision you've ever made? How did it prepare yourself to communicate that decision? And what was the reaction of those who were affected? That's a tough question.
I have one. When I was working at the Charter Township of Clinton, you know, I kind of explained to you a little bit how we had the inventory of those urban renewal buildable lots. And there were a lot of people whose family had, had, they were, let me backtrack. Historically, there was sort of, were like, people had farms there and they lived in Detroit. So people wanted to come back. And so before we did the heavy marketing with developers, we allowed anyone to, to purchase the property, put an offer to purchase in at the low rate, and allowed if they built a house in 18 months, we would waive the remainder of, of the balance. And, and, and African-American couple executed an offer to purchase and never performed. So eventually I had to invalidate that. Because I had another African-American person come who said, he said, I want to buy this lot, you know, and it's, and we're public, so we pull out the offer to purchase. He's like, this is expired, and I forget how long it was expired for. And so I had to null and void that for the one African-American couple, continue and develop an offer to purchase with the new African-American person. But the ironic point then was, is I had a discrimination complaint filed with me with HUD and I had to attend two hearings on that. And it was, you know, and, you know, it was somewhat ironic. But, and it taught me another lesson, because after the first hearing and I was cleared, that person went to Congress in Bonnier, I don't know if you remember at one time, Congress in Bonnier, lived in Clinton Township, pretty powerful, it was a majority whip, and he, you know, made me have to go through another hearing. But I was cleared of any wrongdoing.
This would be difficult to imagine, but imagine the city council is severely split on most every issue and the situation is getting worse. You can't get anything accomplished because you're walking the tight rope between factions. How would you handle this situation and why would you handle it that way?
Well, I think that, you know, in some ways, handling the situation is no, somewhat almost no different if they're not having a fraction. Because one, you know, I think the three most important things are, is one, that one, our staff is apolitical, two, we're ethical, and three, we treat all council members the same. In other words, we, now, we provide all the same information, but sometimes there's questions which are my, which don't come into that. But you, but I think what's important to try to do, and, and this might be have a little do with my planning background and training, and that's try to engage and identify commonalities of where we want to go. And there are a variety of ways of doing that. And, and I would want to explore and not say exactly what I mean, but try to, to engage the council in what is common so that they can move forward. Somewhat what I've seen is larger projects tend to divide this community. You know, and, and, and I'm not exactly sure what strategy I would explain right now, but I would try to explore things, to try to come out with, one, what the public wants and how council can come forward and agree on some of those areas.
Describe a time when you felt it was important for your city to change direction and thinking and you personally championed that change. What did you do? Were you successful or were you like that?
Well, I think I have a, a, a great example. When I first started working in the city of Troy, as I explained before, my goal was to become planning director. And I became planning director. And the city of Troy is very successful, it had developed, but I, I had identified some things professionally which I think I foresaw change, which some of the staff didn't. And, and I can give you one example where I said, you know, you know, when comments were made that we have, you know, all this industrial is the most important thing, and I said, are we really sure that we're going to rest everything on industrial? So I guess my point was is that I identified, and it took me years to get to the city manager's office to provide funding to do it, is to follow through and develop a master plan, a complete one, because there hadn't been a redo of the master plan from, you know, a whole master plan since 1965. And then I followed that up and, you know, with getting zoning ordinance rewrite adopted. And, and, and what was interesting in that is that sometimes, and it's probably true in many organizations, is that sometimes there's a culture change and you have, it takes a while to change the direction. It just doesn't happen immediately. And then, and it, when you think about how long it took from when I became planning director to get a master plan and a zoning, I already had moved on and there's a new planning director. And it took almost eight years, nine years.
What trends are emerging in American society that promise to significantly influence city management and operations in the coming decade? As city manager, how would you prepare Troy city government to cope with these trends?
I think there's one trend which we're, that we're grappling with, and that's how in our society, which mostly are people younger than me, deal, interact digitally. You know, social media, things of that nature. You know, and what does that mean for us in getting public input? You know, internally, we're working on a Parks and Recreation Plan and we used to send surveys out and things of like that, but, you know, how, we have to change ways that we get inputs from our residents. We used, what we do is we conduct a workshop. And I think there seems to be more of a trend that people don't go to things as much anymore. One, I think they're busy, and also they're more apt to use social media types of things. I mean, we all look at what our children do, you know, and, and it's just, it's like that every generation, it changes. People communicate and act differently. But, you know, and that's just one example. People, people are going to expect more things digitally. But at the same time, and you can see, and, and you can see people who have still come here to pay their taxes and, and drop it off. And, but other people just, you know, do it all digitally. And what's interesting is then you have people at both ends, you know, the way people have always done, and then people who are going to do it the new way, which you're trying to, to meet their needs.
Thank you. Can you expand on that just a little bit? Mark, the, the last part of that question really says, how would you prepare the city government to prepare for those trends instead of just saying, here it is? Any idea of how you're going to deal with that?
Well, I think you have to embrace technology and setup. And, and there's, you know, I, I mean, there was a lot of fear in local governments with technology over the years. I mean, they were slow to get computers. But, but then you have to embrace the technologies, but then you have to then fund it, train people, have policies to use it appropriately. And, and another example of that is, is we have people who want to submit plans digitally and they want to pay over. Well, it becomes difficult. We're working with our finance department to figure out how we can have people pay through credit cards electronically. And it's not that easy, because you're supposed to have a signature. And people don't want, they don't, it actually can save them money if they can sit in their office and send it to us. But, you know, you might need different infrastructure. We might have to prioritize in our capital planning, you know, what we really need, can we afford it? And there's a, you know, things cost money, can you afford all of it? That, that becomes a difficult part.
Mark, can you describe a sensitive issue that you dealt with in correcting a subordinate? There are a couple of things we're looking for. We'd like to know why, what made it so sensitive? What factors that you had to consider when dealing with the issue? Describing the process that you used to correct the problem and what the ultimate outcome was.
Okay, I'm trying to pick an example of something which is not here, when I worked here. There was an example which we had an employee who, who would go to the counter, when someone would come to the counter, and physically cry out and interrupt the person dealing with the resident or customer. And it was therefore, you know, I had to, you know, train that person. And it was therefore, you know, I had to, you know, train that person, advise him what behavior was appropriate, what was inappropriate. That person never, never improved that behavior. And I kind of, and just really quick, I want to touch on a little bit about how I think you should deal with people who you're managing. You should identify with that person what the expectations are clearly in their, you know, working in their job. So when they don't achieve those expectations or tasks, it's pretty clear. It's almost like they've come to the realization that they're not, they're not meeting the objectives which they've agreed to achieve in that position. But in that case, you know, we ended up having to, to release that employee, I believe the person might have been on probation if my memory is right, and then I had to carry through, through a civil service commission hearing also and testify on it. And then that person made claims about me to a police department, me doing something which were false claims, which, you know, the chief of police at Clinton Township cleared up really quick. So it can get strange.
Mark, what is your view of the role of the city manager in the organization? How do you view the relationship between the city manager and council?
Well, I think the city manager, obviously with this term, is a manager, but I think there's a good portion of what is leadership too. It's funny, I just read an article that the city management field doesn't need any more leaders, they just need to manage. But I, I kind of disagree. It's a leadership of, one, you provide leadership and direction through strategy, programs, budget to city council. You get input from city council through policies, and then you take it and you lead your staff and manage your staff. But that leadership also includes with the community and the region too. Now, there was a second part of that question about, you know, the relationship with council?
Yeah, how do you view the relationship between city manager and the city council?
Well, I view it as one which, you know, it should be a positive relationship, and I think that what as a city manager should do is, one, provide, you know, the best possible services to, to city council, the best options, strategies, in other words, the best professional effort they can, but also treat the council with respect and, and fairness. What I mean by fairness is that you treat everyone equally. You don't provide information, one, you don't play council members, that's in my mind unethical.
Mark, you often have to work cooperatively with adjoining governmental jurisdictions. Can you give us an example of a constructive partnership with another city or a township, a district, or maybe even a county where you have initiated a program with?
Hmm, well, I can, I have three minutes, so I'm going to try to whip off a couple of quick little different ones. Like I said, Clinton Township, I am being the assistant director there in that department, I was grants manager, I was able to secure funding for seven miles of bike path in Metropolitan Parkway to connect to the spillway, which was federal funds filtered through funding for M-59, which then I re, and we've got MDNR grant money, which then the road commission installed because it was the right way. That's just a quick example. We've done some other things, like really quick, we, for a while before we privatized a building permit, we were providing, building, some building inspection services to Madison Heights. We meet regularly with our neighbors and try to work together and accomplish things. I think that's sufficient.
Mark, can you provide an example of what you've done in your, your current role to manage city budgets in these unknown economic times, and what specifically have you done to ensure realistic forecasts and/or projections?
I'm going to take this backwards, I'm going to talk about projections and forecasts. I think we, as a team, and what we call the restructuring committee here, which include all of the city managers' direct reports, sat down and received forecasts from our own assessor, but also the private sector. But I think what's important there though is that as a group, you just don't accept it, you explore it, you try to see if it's correct, see if there's other information out there, try to get explanations, and, and really make sure that the forecasts are valid. And then the first part of the question was more about what do we do to, was it to?
Look at the, how do you do the city budgets based on economic times?
Well, in part of the forecast, eventually you get to your fiscal year that are upcoming, and you identify the revenues you have. And, and here, you know, city council identified the core confidence fees would be funded. And you need to then work to, especially with the finance department and the experts, because you need to do that, you find out how many dollars you have available to provide in other departments, and then you have to meet, you know, your expenditures have to meet what those revenues are. And you have to look very close at all the departments and see what they're spending on, are there other ways to deliver services? And I think that probably is, is the, the key thing as we go forward and our revenues keep falling, is that are there alternative ways to deliver services? There might be process ways, there might be the ones that we've talked a lot about before, whether it's legalization, consolidation, privatization, hybrid. But I think, and it's also starting to look at alternative things, and this is sort of related to some of the efforts that I'm spearheading right now at the city of Troy, is like, we have twelve undeveloped parks. What do we want to do with those? Are we ever going to build them? I mean, those are community questions though, but they're hard questions which need to be answered and need to be looked at because Public Works has to maintain those areas. I mean, you have to honestly look with, especially the department head who has those departments, and just not, it goes back to the, you know, the, the culture of continuous improvements. You just can't keep doing what you've done always. You have to question, you have to look at creative ways, you have to look at what other communities are doing, and even in the private sector, what they're doing, and then try to see if there's a better way to do it. And I don't think that ever stops. I think with the way that the revenues are projected to, to fall and then stay very flat, yeah, doing budgets is going to require a nimbleness never really seen in, in my career in local government.
Mr. Miller, with council approval, it seems like an appropriate time to take a short recess.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene in five minutes.
decision, but it's a decision you made, that resulted in a reversal of the original decision. Want me to repaint that?
I think and I understand is that you made a decision and it was, ended up being reversed. Or no?
It resulted in a reversal, we're not going to say, it resulted in a reversal.
Resulted in a reversal. Hmm. Hmm. Um, there was a situation once which I was putting together a bid specification package, and I prepared it and, and put it out there and, and actually it was put out to bid, and my boss did not like that process and said that we needed to go through a secondary bid process afterwards.
Did you have any expectation there to be pushed back on that?
No.
Nothing at all?
Well, and I thought I had his agreement on it too.
Okay, well, next part of the question is. When you look back on it, did you think there could have been some important factor that you missed, or you just relied upon that?
Well, and, and I guess what I'm going to say is that me and my, the staff that worked for me did not, we, we must not have informed my boss sufficiently because we thought we had the go-ahead, and then it was somewhat embarrassing because we received bids in, and then we had to then rebid it, and we had to walk a real, I mean, we had sort of egg on our face and we lost some faith with the people who were bidding on the project.
Now you're far away from it. Can you look at that a little different and try to figure out why you maybe missed those reasons?
Well, I, it goes back to, I must not have informed my boss sufficiently of what we were doing because we thought we informed him fully to get the okay to put the bid up. But then after all the process, the point, well, and I'll tell you, it was like, "Where are the prices?" And we're like, "You proved this to be qualification-based." And, "Well, I want prices." Well, we had to go get prices. So I don't, I think the decision, I mean, the, the problem was, is, and we have to take the blame because we sought the approval, and we must not have informed my boss sufficiently.
Okay. Question, a brief question, probably only two or three sentences, but what do you see as challengings, or challenges for you in transiting or relocating to Troy? In particular, challenges?
Well, I think the challenge is a challenge I hear every day when I meet with business people who are attracting people that work in Troy. And that is, is the value of my house has lost fifty percent or so, and, you know, I don't think it's hit bottom yet. And, you know, there are, I don't know the exact circumstances, there's still some empty homes, I just noticed today one was being reoccupied, but just two weeks ago, one was left empty. And that, that, that's the biggest issue. I've talked with my wife, you know, there's no problem with, you know, Troy's a great community, great schools, that, that's not the issue of geographicness or, the realistic problem is having enough equity in the sale of my home. And, and I have to tell you something, just as a side note, we meet with corporations, we had corporations come to us and say they've had to develop a program because they were offering jobs to people, and the people would just leave their homes. So what these corporations were realizing is that they were enabling people just to walk away from their homes. So they've had to develop a corporate responsiveness to help solve that issue because, I mean, the greater issue is, you know, this person needs a job really bad, they come and move to Michigan, but we have a severe problem in this country right now, and it's like... but we have a severe problem in this country right now and that's like traumatic devaluation of property values.
Thanks. Political considerations are an important factor when viewed with many community organizations at one time. Give us an example of a politically sensitive situation you found yourself in during the past year or so and explain how you handled it.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I guess, I mean, obviously the largest one and everyone around here knows is the Transasir and that was a very difficult one and, you know, and ultimately the way that you handle it is once again going back to providing fair, you know, treating every councilman, councilperson equally, providing the same information to everybody and in the end you have to implement what council decides, you know, and over the years in working, you know, being a municipal professional, which I am, you know, every community has difficult times making decisions or things, it, it happens. And, you know, I kind of like to say that, that part of the reason, you know, my passion is, you know, I facilitate in being this, I facilitate democracy and help, you know, cities build, build and sustain great communities. That's, that's my passion, what I want to do. And so, and I read from, it was Paul Zucker, he's one of, a management person, says, you know, what's the other choice? It's democracy, it's what, it's how we live because a lot of times young people who work in, as they come into their career working for local governments, they have a distaste, they, they see it as bad, but, you know, it's democracy. I mean, it's just, what's the other choice?
Describe how you typically communicate with your organization, with city councils, with direct reports, citizens, and with the business community? How would you envision this communication model translating to the culture of Troy?
How I communicate? That's, that's like a, that's a very far-reaching sort of question in that, you know, you communicate many, many, many different ways, I mean, because that was encompassing. I mean, if you take, take communication with city council, I don't think that there's one way that you would communicate. Everyone has their own sort of preferred method of interacting with the city manager. Some people might just prefer to zip an email here or there, some of them might even like a text, some like phone call, some like to meet, some might like to, you know, meet regularly. But on the other scale, that, that's more of personal interaction with the governing body. With the community, the city manager and his staff have to communicate in many, many, many different ways. I mean, there's personal interactions, people come here, email, but it also gets more complex because we have a community affairs department, you then are communicating a lot of different information through the things out of community affairs, the planning department is working on an economic development e-blast, I mean, that's, that's another way. I'm on the board of directors of the Michigan Association of Planning, you know, they all say, oh, you gotta get Twitter. I mean, I mean, I'm like, I'm not really into that, but I did register, I don't really do it, but, but, you know, and that, that, but that, that shows how the world's changing and that there are some, like my kids are probably gonna, you know, deal with Twitter and you look at young professionals, they, they don't, they sort of interact their professional life with their personal life on a Facebook page, which I would never do personally. Interaction with staff, I believe in having staff meetings regularly, but I, what I stress is short ones. I try, in my direct reports, a half hour. I've never tried this, I've heard some managers say that everyone stand up in the meeting, but I've never done that. And I'll be honest, I, I think that in many organizations, I talk to people in the corporate world, you know, they spend too many time in meetings and things aren't getting done and, and part of what I think is, is that you should have an agenda to get through it and not let it go on and on. Communication with staff, that, you know, phone, email, text, in personal meeting, sometimes managers walk the halls and pop in offices. And then with the community, there are different ways in which you do that. I think the city manager has to be out in the public a little bit more, interact with different types of leaders, economic, civic, things of that nature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are your thoughts about, what can we just kind of address on this, technology in the workplace? Specifically, we were looking at your thoughts on GIS, e-government, so our open government and that we have in the website and our city website, and then what's been your level of usage with these tools?
Well, I think in general, I think that that is mandatory in modern government. I think, you know, I work here and I probably, I think our GIS, GIS platform is one of the best. Now, I do a lot of research in this, obviously governments in Silicon Valley are really advanced and set the bar, but our GIS system is really what, we even provide it to people, you know, not the same level of information, but you can get a lot of information from your home computer. Now, you're talking, you mentioned a couple other things, you know, we're trying to develop and move towards the cutting edge, as an example, is that so developers can go online and follow their development approval, where they're at, what they need to do next, and so that they can just do that. Another thing which I, we're working with Safebuilt on doing is, I don't know if you know this, I know Lori knows this, we receive, oh, excuse me, Ms. Bloom, we receive hundreds of FOIA requests for building plans, they want to see sprinkler systems and they want to see the building plans, hundreds a year. So someone has to physically either copy the, find it, copy the plan or, you know, print it up from FISH, but what we want to do is digitize that, which we're working on, but then eventually provide it online as read-only. And that's just one example where, you know, where you can move to in, in the digital age that can save time and effort. It's interesting that governments have tended to be, local governments have been slow to move in that direction and, and now you're seeing some who are really advancing, some that aren't moving. I think here at Troy, and I've been part of that and it's a culture, they're trying to move forward and be, I use the word cutting edge, but try to keep continually improving in that arena, especially if it causes efficiencies. And the other thing is, the amount of paper we've had and still have can be unattending. The building department has to save all of their plans, all of them forever. You know, and, and if you can digitize them and then provide access to it, that's saving time and money. But once again though, there's a cost benefit problem in relationships, all of that, you know, takes, you have to, it takes money.
Do you find sometimes that cost benefit in relation to electronic technology is such that you can't justify it by cost benefit initially by any means and it ends up being more a service benefit than a cost benefit?
Yeah, I think, I think so, especially if you spend a lot of time digitizing a bunch of plans, that costs a lot of money. You still could have the plan sitting somewhere and it wouldn't cost you anything, but then you have to pay for a service to scan them and you're not really recouping it. But it makes life easier and I don't think anyone's looked down the road how much money you'll save.
Mark, what's the one thing about Troy that most interests you?
Most interests me? So you're just saying Troy, you're not saying?
Just Troy. Can't use Boston.
Can't use what?
Boston.
No, no, I meant if, what you meant, like, you know, government or career-wise. I think what interests me is when, when I identified that there was a job opening here back in 2000, I was trying to go to a quality city that had a professional team and try to move up in that organization. So what interests me is one, yes, Troy is a great place, it has lots of potential, it has some challenges, but it has great bones, but all personally and professionally, I think that it allows for me to develop and have a challenge professionally, in a good place with a great staff, which obviously, you know, 26 best community, I mean, and that's all part of it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mark, can you please describe the extent of your experience with business and economic development and redevelopment? What would you consider to be your most significant accomplishment in this area? I know you've talked about Clinton township, so if there's another example that would be?
Well, you mentioned business. I think one of the most eye-opening things that happened to me in, it happened early in my career, I was trained as a city planner and I went to work for a consultant. And I worked for James D. Anowitz, Associates, Inc. And Jim Anowitz said, Mark, you know what, I'm going to, you know, help you along, we got some projects. We had municipal clients and, and private clients and he says, here's the work for you, Mark. He said, okay, Mark, you can go out and make more money if you get jobs. Well, that wasn't easy, you know, I was like, and, and I guess what I'm saying is, is business development, that I did spend three years working in the private sector and, you know, and it was I on me, you have to work hard and, and there was no one there to really mentor me in that situation of how to do it. And, but to move that on a little bit further, you talked about business redevelopment and I, I think what, what's happening is, and we're doing it right now, working for the city of Troy, is we're meeting with all of the business owners, you know, we have round tables in which we bring in the pertinent staff, we, we listen to them, we develop solid relationships with the collaborators, which are the Michigan Economic Development Corporation in Oakland County, and, and also I think what's important is we've developed and put together a strategy and a team to prepare ourselves to redevelop and that is really quickly put is that we did a, you know, it even goes back to Vision 2020, to the Master Plan and Big Beaver Corridor Study, the Big Beaver Design Guidelines, a rewrite of the zoning ordinance, but then, and then with the Zucker Study, is to have a team that's on board and everyone has a culture of promoting fast, fair, and efficient development approval. And I believe our staff here lives that every day, both in economic development, planning, building, and now even down to like the code enforcement officers, they, they know that customer service is important, handling things and, and that, that's a little bit different with redevelopment, but that's just touching that, you know, you need to provide good service well, in all venues of government.
Good, thank you.
Okay, here's the last one. I know you want more, but this is going to be the last one. Can you provide some specific steps that you've taken in the past to help foster development and relationships with union members that prove to be beneficial during contract negotiations?
Can you repeat it?
Sure. Specific steps you have taken in the past to help foster and develop relationships with union members that prove to be beneficial during contract negotiations?
Yes, and, and I will identify that, that, that one of my areas in which I could, that is not strong, is labor negotiations, but I believe in the restructuring process, I met with every single group of people that were laid off, every, almost every single meeting, certainly everyone that was under the division which I control, but it's also part of that, it was building trust that with the employees and meeting with the employees and it was done more as a group with the city manager, human resources director, and explaining to those employees the restructuring, where we're going, and being honest and upfront. And, and I think that it's, it's very complex because there are people who are involved in the labor situation from the police chief, human resources director, you know, there are a lot of people involved in that, but all, what I'm getting at is that we set nature and tone, and I'll give you an example, which I personally did, which may not have specifically, you know, was identifiable, but, but I think it helped set a culture that when we had a layoff, I brought the building department together and I did this with all departments and said, this is the staff, we're budgeted, and I was honest with them. As of June, the end of June, the budget's not adopted, I don't know what's going to happen, but you have, you have a job. But, and what, what I'm trying to get at is that, working for John Zerl, let's say, a manager and his interest-based party, it's about being honest and upfront and trying to actually, you know, develop a team here and not create, you know, negative interactions between different labor organizations and groups and employees. And, and there was a time in which I was directly involved with ASME and all of the dealings when I had the Public Works Director was a direct report to me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller, for joining us in this important interview process. That does conclude our questions, but we'd like to ask if you have any questions for city council or city management or anything else that you'd like to add?
Well, I like, I know I conduct a lot of interviews and it's, I would like to just add something about who I am or in what I am, what a, and I think that, and I kind of mentioned before that I, I truly do have a passion for, for what I call facilitating democracy and helping communities, you know, either build a great area or sustain it. I think also I'm in a unique situation working in the city manager's office to understand the good points that Troy has and the great points and the challenges that lay ahead. And also I believe I'm in a unique circumstance to, to jump right in and, and not have a large learning curve. With that being said, I think that, you know, it will be a new position and it will take a lot of time and effort on my part to, if I am selected, to do that. Question, and like every applicant asks, so when are you going to make a decision?
Well, we're going to have deliberations this afternoon and hopefully come to a decision, but you know, everything's open and so that'll be our first step toward that.
Thank you, I just did that because everyone does it in the. And I just want to say thank you very much for offering me an interview, I really am honored by it and I appreciate it. And, and the last thing I really want to say that, I say this on my part and I know on the rest of the staff, that no matter what decision you make, I believe the professional and ethical staff who work in this building will work whoever you choose as city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
That concludes our interviews. We will have a recess until 3:00 PM, at which point we'll start our city council deliberations. Meeting is adjourned, or meeting is recessed.